Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February fourteenth Town Council Meeting. It's PM. I would like everyone to stand. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on everything that's been happening in the world and and close at home. Thank you. At this time, I need to announce that this meeting is being audio and video recorded by LCAT, and I have to ask if anyone in the audience is recorded. Right on. Public comments. Do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
And we don't.
Don, is there anyone online that would like to raise their hand for a public comment?
I don't see any hands.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Bruce, come on. Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Is there any counselors with anything they'd like to share? Hey, seeing none. Town Manager Report. Mary, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you. Somewhat brief tonight because we're in the midst of budget season and it's kind of taken a lot of attention away from other things, at least out of our office. But there's been a great deal of effort since we met last in January trying to do some refurbishment of the leased space at three eighty-two so that we can move some departments in there. I understand that it should be finished within a couple of weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so we're looking forward to that with great anticipation. Next Friday, I guess, yeah, this this week, the Westfield Gas and Electric IT Department is coming in to visit with our IT Department on the broadband project for the extension of fiber to the to the town. We went out there, a group of us, there were five, I think. I think I reported on that last month. We went out in late January. And we're given a presentation by the Westfield Gas and Electric, which operates an entity called Whip City Fiber, and it was very informative. They've got the municipal light plant in place there. And they run fiber to many of the rural communities, and they received a lot of funding from the Commonwealth and the federal government through ARPA. That was one of the first uses for the expansion of fiber to rural areas. So they've capitalized on that, and they have their infrastructure in place. So I think they're looking for new customers. And we went out in the hopes that we could learn something from their operation, and I think we learned a great deal. And as a follow-up to that, Tom Christensen has a connection in South Hadley. And the same group of people was invited to go to that community and see what their fiber operations are like. So we're trying to glean from communities around us that have already gone through the paces that you've appropriated thirty-five thousand for that feasibility study and in the hopes that maybe we can save on some of that. And either become a customer of one of these other entities, or at least have a little bit of a jumpstart on our own feasibility study once we get going. And Connor, you weren't invited because I think you were out of town somewhere at the time. But Connor was a member of the Broadband Committee that had been meeting in the past to try to get this ball rolling. We've had a number of meetings with Westcom and the Veterans Board that have been extremely time-consuming. In fact, we have to meet again Friday, an executive session for Westcom to discuss the Executive Director's new contract. Her existing contract was signed by the Mayor of Chicopee and the community of Long Meadow. And it was signed before Munson and East Long Meadow and Ware became members of the of the district. So there are some changes that we've discussed. And the main idea, the main item on the agenda on Friday will be the extension of Aaron's contract. Veteran Services met today, although we found out after the meeting that it hadn't been posted here. It had been posted in Wales, but not in Hampden or East Long Meadows. So all the votes that were taken at that meeting will have to be reaffirmed at a future meeting. But that's not, I mean, the best, the good that came out of the meeting was there was a Veteran Service Officer update by Jerry Rathie, who's our new officer, and he's he's really a ball of fire. He's had a lot of training. He's had, he's had done a lot of outreach. He's made contacts with other Veteran Service Officers throughout Western Mass. And he's up to speed on all the reimbursements. He's met with clients. He's here Monday, Tuesday, and Friday in this building, and then the other two days a week, he alternates between Hampden and Wales. So we were all very impressed with his presentation today and his enthusiasm for things. So I think we we have a good person in the in the fold for that. On February sixth last week, we had a nice ceremony at the Fire Department to swear in Chris Beecher as the town's first Deputy Fire Chief. Chris, as most of you know, is a long-term Fire Department employee. He's done a lot of work with other departments in town. He got a lot of recommendations from other department heads for his service to the to the schools, for example, with fire safety. He's over here at the Council on Aging, often giving little presentations to interested groups about maintain fire safety and safety in the home and things like that. So he came highly recommended. He was great. And I know many of you had the opportunity to attend that ceremony. So we're happy to have him on board in that new role. Our new Finance Director just left the room. I don't know what that means. I I'm not sure how to interpret that, but she started here February first, and it's the fourteenth, and she's gone. So she's been very busy. As you know, the School Building Committee is looking for her contributions with to analyze the tax impact of of any vote to to support a new high school and debt exclusion. Oh, there she is. Dead exclusion. You know, our prior Finance Director was the Treasurer at Westcom. Was our Town's Representative on the Scantic Valley Health Trust. It was, he was our Town's Representative on the Hampton County Retirement Board. Many of these roles I haven't mentioned yet to Kim because I don't want to overburden her. It's a huge job with a lot of responsibility. And so for now, we're trying to just go slowly and let her get acclimated to the numerous personalities that she has to deal with and the various budgets from all the departments. So we're meeting tomorrow to have our first go-around on the twenty-four operational budget. And we certainly look forward to Kim's contributions to the town. Bailey Mitchell, our Planning Director, will be here by Zoom later on tonight to talk to you about the fuel-efficient policy. And perhaps give you an update on the Community Energy Plan, which I think is being deferred till for a vote till next month. He continues to work very hard on completing all of these plans and implementing the the recommendations of the master plan. So he too has an awful lot of responsibility. In addition to his daily work in the Planning Department, of course, he monitors and assists the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Conservation Commission, as well as the Planning Board Meeting. So it's a big-time commitment, and there's a lot of issues. And I I try to give him as much support as I can from our office. I know Tom Christensen has been a big asset, helping Bailey achieve some of the goals that he wants for the Planning and Community Development Department. So we're happy about his progress, too. We're also underway with negotiations for the Town's Fire Department Union. They are ongoing. They've hit a few bumps in the road due to just lack of receipt of documentation. One side essentially coming, information coming to us so that we can evaluate it in advance of a meeting. We're also about to begin the clerical and professional unit negotiations again very soon. Erin Kobler, as you know, our COA Director, is the Chair of the Commission on Disability. And again, Tom and I, well, Tom interviewed these candidates, Jean Delaney and Joanne Welch, last week, both of whom volunteered to become the first members of that Disability Commission. So we're very happy to have both of them. And again, the School Committee, the School Building Committee voted its preferred schematic design for submission to the Mass Building Authority early in February. There's a mistake in my memo. It says that there's a next community outreach planned for March twentieth. It's actually March sixteenth, but it will be at the high school at six. One other little note, the library is sponsoring its annual PJ drive. So if anybody's got any extra PJs at home for any size, toddler through adult, you're welcome to drop them off. They'd be much appreciated. And today, we attend a Zoom hearing in the Land Court regarding three thirty Chestnut Street. And there was good news for the town, the litigation that's pending against the developer. And the town has joined in that litigation voluntarily dismissed at today's hearing. So that's that's what I have for you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for our Town Manager? Okay, we are going to jump right into the approval events for January tenth. Do I have a motion?
I motion to approve January tenth, twenty twenty-three, open session minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We'll go right to the next set of minutes, which is February seventh, open session.
I move to approve that February seventh, twenty twenty-three, open session minutes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I relay to Jeannie one little change on page two, paragraph one, it was just two digits were swapped, but other than that.
Not a big difference.
Everything was, yeah, I made a three-million-dollar difference. Okay, any other discussion? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Communications, Correspondence, and Announcements. We received an email from the Council of Aging. And they were requesting us a discussion, I guess, to see the council would be interested in meeting Council of Aging either monthly or quarterly or every six months to do, what is it?
Coffee with the council.
With the counselors. So I said I would bring it in front of you. I think it's a great idea. My thought was maybe we could do something quarterly, set it up where either one or two of us meet up based on what everyone's availability is. Didn't know what your thoughts were. I'm assuming it would be a late morning type deal, coffee, but.
They typically, if I can, they're in without being asked. I've noticed when they've had guests in the morning, it's usually ten to eleven because by eleven, they start to get into their lunch routines. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I I used to do a coffee hour here, and it was at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Rob, Aaron's on if you want to bring her in.
Oh, that would be great. Aaron's on.
Oh. I didn't hear him.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for entertaining our request.
So we were just wondering, I mean, are we looking like at ten o'clock in the morning for an hour? Or what was the thoughts of that?
So I think we could be really flexible. Mary also has done this before for us. Thought it was a great opportunity to connect our seniors with the greater East Long Meadow community. We can really work with your schedule. We do actually breakfast once a month from eight to ten. We could have it at the same time as that, or we could have you come in nine-thirty, ten o'clock. Have it as just sort of its own thing. We can be really flexible. I know you guys are all very busy. So we can make it work with your with your schedules.
Marilyn.
Erin, question.
Yep.
Sounds like it's more of an informal opportunity that we would maybe mingle with rather than a structured formal presentation. That's what I was hoping we could get away from because you're not interacting. You're just giving a presentation. But if you were to just visit with them and ask them, you know, what's on your mind, or what would you like to hear about?
That's sort of how we envisioned it, as a very informal sort of mingle table to table. And I think, you know, Mary, you're welcome to come back too for Coffee with the Town Manager. But I think it was a little bit of a slower place at that time. Now we have more people gathering in the mornings. So it might just be more, you know, more productive, more ability to have some some real conversation.
Okay, I'm I'm good.
I think it's great. We were just talking. My thought was quarterly. So what I'll do is I'll follow up with an email to you, and we'll see if we can't set the first one up. And then roughly every three months after that.
That'd be great. Appreciate it.
Perfect. I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Sounds great. Thanks. Everyone, have a great night.
Okay, we're going to move on. Public hearings. Okay, we have a six fifteen public hearing. This is a public hearing for required second reading. With the addition of a description of the Human Resources Department to the Town Bylaws, Chapter seventy-eight, Human Resources. Council members present Connor O'Shea, Michael Kane, Marilyn Richards, Paige, Kathy Hill, Matt Voucher, Anna Jones. I could ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February fourteen, twenty twenty-three, at six fifteen PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at three twenty-eight North Main Street to address adding a description of the Human Resources Department to the Town Bylaws, Chapter seventy-eight, Human Resources. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public in the Town Clerk's Office and on the town's website. For the Council, Jean Arcoglatti, Town Clerk of the Council.
Great, thank you. Is there a counselor who would read in the Chapter seventy-eight, Human Resources into the record? Thank you, Connor. I appreciate it.
Shall I read the
the first one? And then afterwards, Mr. Christensen will give us the Bylaw Review Committee update.
Perfect. Hey, purpose of bylaw, to add a description to the HR Department to Chapter seventy-eight. Chapter seventy-eight, Human Resources, common department of. Section seventy-eight dash one, Department Head, Town Manager shall appoint a Director of Human Resources. The Director of Human Resources shall be responsible for the supervision and coordination of matters of the town that are placed under their control by the Charter, Bylaw, Town Manager, Rules and Regulations, or by other town vote. Section seventy-eight dash two, Compositions. The Department of Human Resources shall consist of the Director of Human Resources and include additional employees as required for the efficient operation of the department. Section seventy-eight, duties and responsibilities. The Human Resources Department will provide the leadership, direction, and support necessary to attract, retain, and develop talented individuals to align ourselves with the changing obligations of our town. Human Resources will assist town officials and senior managers in fairly consistently and lawfully creating and administering policies and practices that sustain a professional, productive, efficient, and innovative work environment, which supports the town and its departments in effectively performing their missions. Section seventy-eight dash four, Annual Report. The Director of Human Resources shall annually prepare and submit to the Town Manager a report that shall contain all matters pertaining to the department as required by the Town Manager.
Great, thank you, Connor. This time, I would ask Tom Christensen, who was on the Bylaw Review Committee, to give us an update on what the the Review Committee thought of that.
Good evening. We met, let's see, January thirty-first. We went through the proposed bylaw. We made some changes, nothing, nothing too substantial. The the title, I think somewhere was written, Human Resources, comma, Department of, which we just changed to Human Resources Department. That's how we sort of, all the departments are named. Information Technology Department or Health Department, so in the interest of keeping everything the same. In seventy-eight dash one, the Department Head, line three, we changed placed under their control by Charter to placed under the Director's control, to be a little more clear. And in that same line, added the in front of Town Manager. And then seventy-eight dash three, Duties and Responsibilities, again on line three. We changed Senior Managers to Department Heads to clarify that a little bit more. And that was about it. We did have additional discussion about things, but ended up leaving everything kind of the way that it is.
Too crazy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, it is a public hearing, so I would like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone that has any comments on a description of the Human Resources? Don, is there anyone online that raising their hands that's interested in speaking?
I see no hands.
Okay, I will bring it back to the board at this time. Does the board have any additional input that they would like to discuss on it? Then I would entertain a motion at this time to close the public input portion of the meeting.
So I moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And Jeannie, do I have to do a roll call vote on each one?
Only when you vote on the.
That's what I thought. Okay, then, do we have a vote? Or a motion to approve the HR Department description as amended and recommended by the Bylaw Review Committee?
We do have a motion. Motion to include the addition of the District of the Human Resources Department to the Town Bylaws. Act of seventy-eight, Human Resources, as presented.
My second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote. I will start with Anna.
Yes.
Ma'am.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Great, new bylaw in place. Description at least.
Yeah.
Anyway, sir. We have seven minutes. Do we want to go out of order to licensing matters? I have a motion to go out of order.
I move to move out of order to number nine orders of the day until such time that it is six thirty or later to return public hearings. Then we're normal order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll jump to nine A one then, which is approved. Approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple. Is there a motion?
I motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple, forty-three Chestnut Street. For a birthday party on March four, twenty twenty-three, five o'clock PM, twelve AM.
Second.
Any discussion? That's a heck of a party.
It's not a kid's party, I'm sure.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great, that passes. Nine two is approval of a one-day entertainment license for Craft Thirty-two Bistro and Events. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve a one-day entertainment license for Craft Thirty-two B Show and Events on Main Street for the Aqua String Band, Mummer's for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, six to six thirty PM.
And I'll second Anna's motion. Is there any discussion? Jeannie.
Can I just add that these one-day approvals normally go through least fire, building, and health? And both the Fire Department and Building Department said the condition would be that the occupancy does not exceed the ninety-eight.
Which is what their occupancy is right now in there.
So I could put that on, if you vote that way, I could put that on the entertainment license itself.
Is it possible, given the nature of this event with this Mummer's coming to perform and then move on? I'm understanding that they're going to other locations in the.
Right, the thing is, they get there and then they walk through the venue, playing their music for twenty minutes or so, then get on the bus and head out.
So it's not as though, weather permitting, they would do this outside, which would allow for.
They go through the.
They have to be inside for it, okay.
They don't have to be, but I guess that's what they do. I've never.
Never seen them.
I know we talked about the Planning Board. Did that go in front of them? Because I know there's special permit limits that. Or is it going?
It has not yet gone through the Planning Board.
So.
March eighteen.
Yeah, which is plenty of time. I know they're gonna.
I don't know if the applicant's here. I don't.
He's in the.
I mean, my thought was just go ahead and vote on this. Make it contingent upon that there's no problems with the Planning Board. If that makes sense.
Hello.
Joe, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I had a little problem. Everybody gets confused, John and Joe Sullivan. The it's exactly what you said. The the band's gonna come. They're gonna walk through. They wear very ornate outfits, play a little music. They they're, you know, you've been in in craft. They they're just gonna walk around the main bar, play some music, and then and then head back out. It's all for, you know, it's mostly for kids and family. It's led by Brian Elliott of Springfield PD. Is is like the point of contact and the head of it. And he, the the band comes up from Philadelphia for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And they do these little events all around the area, and they wanted to come over and and be involved in East Long Meadow and Craft Thirty-two. So the, as far as the occupancy goes, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. We'll pull some tables out before the event to make sure we don't have any other people there. But we don't have a problem if that's a contingency of it as well.
So do we need to adjust the motion or to make a contingent upon the Planning Board? Or just assume that it's going through the Planning Board?
I think we have. Or could it be contingent upon the conditions placed upon the application by the Fire Department and the police and the Building Department? Which is the occupancy, if you pull the table.
Well, special permit limits the number of members of the band to three. And that's why I just said, and they're just going to say for this one time, they didn't see a problem with it.
It's up to you. I can follow up with Bailey.
What's the wishes of the board?
I might be in the audience.
Bailey here yet?
Yeah.
She's zooming in. Maybe that will help.
Sure.
Oh, he's got his hand up. Hello.
Hi, Bailey, how are you?
Oh, good.
So our discussion is with regards to Craft Thirty-two and the Mummer's and just making sure that the Planning Board is gonna be okay with that.
Yeah, so in terms of going to the Planning Board, I was really thinking that the special permit could have a couple of conditions regarding the event or events like this, but that's really up to the Planning Board. And I don't see this particular event having any issues in terms of being, you know, I guess, an issue with a condition or something like that, violating a condition or something like that. So but it really does depend on that public hearing at their next meeting. So that'd be next Tuesday at the twenty-first, so.
Yeah, there's plenty of time.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly, right?
But in, I guess in terms of adding a condition to the entertainment license, I don't really see a reason to do that, um. You know, with the planning board approval, because realistically, the special permit, um, allows the restaurant to operate. Um, you know, day to day, so this is just kind of like a, a special permit to the special permit, um. In terms of a, a one day entertainment license, so.
So with that being said, I'm good with the way the motion was then, based on everyone's got knowledge of it, if everyone's okay.
Yep.
So we've had a motion made and seconded, um, a lot of discussion. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Well, Bailey was already gone. Okay, and it is past six thirty. So we can return for our second public hearing. Okay, so this is a public hearing for required second reading for the removal of chapter three, three, five firearms from the town bylaws. Uh, the council members present are Anna Jones, Matt Boucher, Kathy Hill, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richards, Michael Kane and Connor O'Shea. I would ask the clerk to read into the record the legal notice.
East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on February fourteen, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM. In the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty-eight North Main Street. To address the removal of chapter three, thirty-five firearms from the town bylaws in its entirety. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public in the town clerk's office. And on the town's website, where the council, Jeanne R. Qualletti, town clerk and clerk of the county.
Thank you. Is there a counselor that would like to read it in for the record?
I'll do it.
Great. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Purpose, the current bylaw is not needed. Remove chapter three, thirty-five firearms in its entirety. History, adopted by the town council of the town of East Long Meadow as chapter eight, section eight point zero eight zero. And section eight point one one zero of the nineteen eighty-two general bylaws amendments noted were applicable. Section three, three, five dash one, discharge of firearms within town. Rifles larger than twenty-two caliber, pistols larger than thirty-eight caliber. And shotguns larger than twelve gauge may not be discharged within the limits of the town without a permit from the town manager. This section shall not apply to law enforcement personnel in the performance of their official duties. Section three, three, five dash two, fine for carrying firearms on private property. Any person who, without the written permission of the owner, enters upon the improved or unimproved land of another. While carrying firearms shall be punished by a fine of one hundred dollars for each such offense. This bylaw shall be enforced by police officers and may be administered under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty. Section twenty-one D, the noncriminal disposition law.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, yeah, if you wanna read in, like I said, um, so I was the one that suggested this based on. Um, some information that we had received through Jeannie, I guess some residents had called questioning. The different, uh, bylaws and the firearms and, um, that was mostly related towards hunting and all. Um, when I looked at it, I, I didn't see a need for it, um. So it brings into account, do you wanna go through the rest of it and? So I, what I was thinking is, I mean, my reasoning.
Okay, happy to. Um, I have two emails to read into the record. One of them is from, um, councillor Ralph Page to. The police chief and then his response. Okay. This is Ralph Page. Good morning, chief. I have submitted the attached firearms bylaw to the town council. For consideration on its removal from our general bylaws. This bylaw currently exists as chapter three, three, five firearms. I would ask that you review the bylaw as it's cur- as it currently reads. And give me your opinion with regards to if it should remain as a bylaw or can be removed. I will give you my thoughts and reasoning for my request to remove it. In light of the recent Supreme Court rulings with regard to the Second Amendment. One, I believe as a town, we should, we do not have the authority. To require an individual who has a license to carry to seek out and receive written permission from every landowner where he may travel. Two, I do not believe we can limit the size or caliber of a firearm. Which one may use especially in self-defense. I also do not believe the town manager should be put into a situation. Where they can determine what size firearm firearm one may choose especially in self-defense. Three. If one uses a firearm in violation of a state or federal law, they have a lot more to worry about. Than a hundred dollar general bylaw penalty from the town of East Long Meadow. Jean, Jeannie has received some calls regarding our bylaws and how they pertain to hunting within town. And this matter seemed to come up to the surface and I thought it would be better to clear it up. I look forward to hearing your thoughts as I will be presenting them to our bylaw subcommittee on January thirty-first. Thank you. The chief's response. Okay, just following up on this, I have no issues or concerns with the repeal of this bylaw. And I largely agree with the rationale you provided for the repeal as well. If you need me to attend this meeting, let me know, but of course, I trust that you can relay my position as well. Thank you. And that's our police chief, Mark Williams.
Thank you. I would ask Tom Christensen, who is on our bylaw committee. To give us a rundown of what the bylaw committee thought.
Yeah, so we basically, uh. This was, I guess, our second, uh, topic, uh, you know, uh. In no small part, sort of chief, chief's thoughts really. Sort of swayed the day, I suppose. Um, I think we all thought that if he was okay with repealing it, that, you know. We were okay with repealing it and it wouldn't be really the first time. That the committee has relied on mass general law or federal law instead of having a local law that. Either we had to go through the process of changing every time the laws changed or didn't make much sense, so. We, we, uh, we thought the rationale as a whole was, was good as well.
Okay, at this time, I would open it up to our public, um, ask if there was any input from the public as it is a public hearing. Seeing no one in here, Don, is there anyone online?
Uh, nope.
Okay, so I will bring that back to the board, um, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Then I would, uh, look for a motion. To approve.
I move to remove chapter three, thirty-five firearms from the town bylaws.
I second.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. I'll start with Anna.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Uh, Kathy.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Marilyn, yes. Mike.
Yes.
And Connor.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Financial matters. This is, oh, this is a good one. This is the appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Water Enterprise retained earning fund. Bruce, step up and tell us a little bit about it real quick.
Sure. Um, this is a, a loan, um, from the SRF fund, uh, fund from the state, the Mass DEP. This is a new program that came out part of our lead and copper, um, regulations last year. That we have to do an analysis of every service line in every home in East Song Meadow that falls within a criteria of the dates. Um, provided, I believe it's nineteen eighty-six and, and previously. Um, so part of this project is to go to every single home in town that obviously meets those date requirements. And do inspections, uh, some of these inspections are actually going on now that we know about this program, so we're doing meter change outs. Um, and things like that, when people's homes, we're actually looking at the, the plumbing, uh, mainly the service, um, line that comes into the building to your water meter. So we're starting the process now. This all has to be completed by October of twenty twenty-four. Um, and this, this is obviously, uh, one of those unfunded mandates again that the town is, um. Um, obviously put under again, but at least there's, um, some loan opportunities, so. So this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will come of our, come out of our Water Enterprise Fund and then be repaid back by the Mass DEP.
So if I understand right, it's mostly going into people's basements to look where the water main comes in and determine if it's copper or if it's.
Yes.
Paper or something.
Where we can, obviously, sometimes there's, uh, issues with moving around people's basements and things like that, so if we can't identify. What the material is, we actually have to physically go and dig up their, their service.
We're gonna see that.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's, there's a lot to be learned, part of this program, so we're gonna get started, um. Uh, more than likely, as soon as, uh, we get this application in and, uh, start the process. I do have this as a request through a capital. Account on, under, uh, our water division, but obviously if we, we go this route, we can, uh, take that off the, uh, the capital request for this year as well.
That'd be great.
And if I can clarify or ask you to clarify, you said nineteen eighty-six or older?
Yes, nineteen, yep, houses built after nineteen or before, um, nineteen eighty-six.
Quick question, Bruce, um, two hundred and fifty thousand from the Water Enterprise Fund.
Yes.
What, what do you have left?
We currently.
One point five seven two million is in it.
Alright, so you can cover it.
Yes, yes, okay, like you said, it's like the chapter ninety, it's a reimbursable.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
I knew that only because I asked him earlier. I just made sure. Okay, any further questions for Bruce?
This is a curious question, if you ballpark. How many homes do you think?
So currently the town has four thousand three hundred and five services out of these water services, roughly. Two thousand seven hundred and eighteen have to be investigated.
Fifty percent.
Just keep in mind too, every other community in the Commonwealth is going.
Thanks.
And the country, yep. And we're pretty, we're pretty hopeful, uh, Felix Fashon, our water and store administrator feels that they're, they're good, it's gonna be marginal. And if we find any at all, so.
That's good news. Okay, I would entertain a motion then at this time. Connor, sorry.
Once you complete, um, like the analysis of like which ones have it, well, I guess what's the next step after that? Do we have to do something about them?
That's gonna be figured out, but yes, we're gonna have to actually, um, remove them and put in new lines. Uh, we haven't gone through that, that process yet. I'm not sure how that's gonna play out. Um, but obviously, the health and well-being of our residents, the utmost importance, so, um. Like you said, there'll be more, more to come once that's all been figured out and what the cost is, is associated with that as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
I have, I have one other.
Go ahead.
So is it safe to say, obviously from the curb box to the home, burden falls on the homeowner, correct?
No, not in, in this program. That'll be up to us to assess and remediate if the town, if, yes.
Okay.
To remedi- remediate the entire issue.
Yes.
So what we're talking about is a trench being dug from the road all the way to.
All the way to the meter.
Falling on the homeowner, under most circumstances, that would be the responsibility of the homeowner. If it was a leak or, or any problems with your water gates, but.
So that's a great thing, at least it doesn't, the burden doesn't fall on the resident. But it's also a lot of work for the, obviously, department, but like you said, I think we're gonna, uh, it's gonna be marginal what we find out there, so.
Who knows, maybe there's only two in the whole.
Yeah.
Two hundred, two thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Two hundred. Oh, with the two in there somewhere here. Okay. The discussion before we entertain the motion, Matt.
Yeah, the good one.
I, I motion that the town appropriates two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from water retained earnings to pay costs of a lead service line inventory and replacement plan program. Including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town council. Is authorized to borrow said amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. In accordance with chapter twenty-nine C as amended. Of the general laws under and pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-four, subsection seven, subsection eight. And that the treasurer, town manager and any other appropriate town official are each authorized to take any actions necessary. Or convenient to carry out this project. It is the town's intention that the debt service be payable in the first instance from water retained earnings.
Is there a second?
And I will second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your application is ready to go.
Excellent, thank you.
We already made it. Stay up tomorrow.
Almost, though.
Okay, um, the next is number two, um. So approve a total transfer of three hundred and sixty thousand, but it's under two A. So the first one is to approve a transfer of a hundred and fifty thousand from. Highway salaries, utility accounts. Is there a motion?
I move to approve a transfer of a hundred fifty thousand dollars from DPW highway salaries. Multiple utility accounts to cover shortfall for utility natural gas expenses.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? So is most of this all gas, natural gas?
Yes.
And. So going forwards, is there any chance of getting, um, a program together, like a three year where we're locked in so that we budget for it or?
I'm actually working on that now, so, um, the main contributing factor to this, uh, increase. Um, was last year when I was developing my budget, our contract had in, ended, uh, November first of twenty twenty-two. Our new rate, we didn't get till September of, uh, twenty twenty-two and obviously the market's been so volatile over this last year. We locked in at two dollars and ten cents per therm versus our sixty-six cents per therm, so it's a two hundred and eighteen percent increase. But it's only for one year and I do have some good news on the horizon at least. Um, I, we've been, uh, working with our broker, um, as of like two weeks ago, we're down to about a dollar thirty per therm. I'm kind of waiting, because like you said, I think it's gonna go down even further. I'm thinking, uh, beginning of March. Get down to at least to a dollar twenty per therm, so.
You know, Jim.
And then I'm gonna go into a three-year contract, so, um, things are starting to stabilize a little bit, um, but. Yeah, so we're working, working the system.
I'm sure it was very difficult when you got the bills.
It was very, yes, I went down to Mary's office and, uh, yes, I said, look at this. Yeah, it's a shocker, it is, you don't realize it until you, like you said, the big, uh, facilities and how much they actually use, so.
Yep. Is there any further discussion?
That's a lot of paperwork to, thank you for putting that together.
Hearing none, I would, uh, entertain the motion to approve then, or all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Okay, uh, two B, approve a transfer of two hundred and ten thousand from free cash for the utilities. Is there a motion for two B?
There is, uh, I motion to approve a transfer of two hundred and ten thousand from, from, dash, DPW school and town utilities to cover the shortfall. Of the utility natural gas expenses.
I second it.
This is the exact same thing, so is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Bruce, you're good.
You're good. You got your utilities. Thank you.
Got another one?
We can keep the heat on.
Yeah, well, that's, that was for the utilities, so the next is to appropriate. Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen expenditure of winter recovery assistance program. Is there a motion?
I move to appropriate three hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. And fifty-three cents by borrowing or otherwise for the construction, reconstruction and or maintenance. And or maintenance of public ways to be expended under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works. And said some to be reimbursed by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Winter Recovery Assistance.
Is there a second?
A second.
Again, this is just like the chapter ninety.
Yes.
It's an additional, uh, amount that was given out based on the number of miles of roads, which is great. Um, any help we can get?
Absolutely.
So. Having a motion made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, further, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Can I just make a comment, um? While Bruce is at the table, uh, I want the council to, um. Acknowledge or at least be reminded that, that first motion, the one transferring a hundred and fifty thousand from highway, D P W highway salaries. Is testament to the sacrifices that that department makes all the time, because by not filling positions and going without and having the staff do more than they're. Could reasonably expect, be expected to do, that's where those savings come from, and that hundred and fifty otherwise would be coming out of free cash or would be. Scrounging around for it, um, so I just want to praise Bruce and his, his managers, Felix and Daryl and. Uh, Mark now, um. For all the good work that they're doing to make things stay cohesively operational in tough times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Bruce, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next we have the, uh, appropriation of fifteen thousand three hundred and three dollars from free cash. Or Ford E three fifty van. Motion.
I motion to appropriate fifteen thousand three hundred and three dollars from free cash. The difference in the amount of the purchase price of a Ford E three fifty van, number forty seven. From the time of approval to the time of purchase.
Second.
Have an emotion made and seconded, um, further discussion is. Just, I want to point out to the public, this has nothing to do with, um, us not wanting to order it in time. We appropriated the funds. But Ford locked down and wouldn't accept any, um.
Yes.
Request for vehicles, so.
Wow, recently, until January of this year, it's been actually almost a ye- a year and a couple of months.
And I think that had a lot to do with the amount of chips and all.
That was supply chain issues?
Yes, yes.
So it's not something that, you know, was forgot about or anything, and, um, I know we were all able to get the information. But a lot of times the public looks at it and goes, oh, there they go again, um, so no, it was not that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Another financial matter, um, approve a transfer of thirteen thousand eight hundred from the ambulance revenue. Um. Reserve for appropriation fund to the vehicle supply fuel expense, is there a motion?
I move to approve a transfer of thirteen thousand eight hundred from the ambulance revenue reserved for appropriation fund to the. Vehicles supply fuel expense account to offset anticipated additional ambulance fuel costs.
Second, Anna's motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Think it's pretty self-evident.
Yep.
Fuel's expensive. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under old business.
Thank you.
Bruce, thank you. Update, I asked for this to. On regarding creating to North Main Street. Um, up, it's very simple, we are still awaiting some paperwork to come in. Uh, when the paperwork comes in, I will make sure everything is bundled together. Um, all the information that we've received and it will go out to each and every counselor for review for, uh, future meeting. And then moving forwards, we have the, um, to approve the adoption of a fuel efficient vehicle policy. For the town green communities designation. This is for Bailey. Don, is Bailey still with us?
Hello again.
Welcome back. Fuel efficient vehicles.
Yeah, so, um, I have a couple of updates on the, uh, energy or on the, uh, green communities, um. As a whole, before I get into the specific of the fuel efficient vehicle policy, um. On the energy reduction plan that was, uh, supposed to be on the agenda tonight. Um, unfortunately, we had to add additional data to the mass energy end site. Uh, program that the state uses to essentially, um, keep track of all of our energy usage and. Uh, make sure that green communities are, um. Essentially meeting their energy reduction, uh, and it's kind of a reporting tool essentially, uh, for all the green communities, so. Um, it takes a little bit of time, once we add accounts to populate that data, so we added the accounts following the, uh, past. The last, uh, council meeting, and it's still populating that data, so I'm. Uh, I'm pretty sure it's, it should be done by the end of this week, and then we should be able to, um, get the draft. Uh, energy reduction plan to the council in time for the next meeting, um, which. We will have to, because the, uh, application deadline for the green communities is the end of March, so, um. Just. Making you aware that, uh, we will only have one meeting to discuss that po- uh, that energy reduction plan, so I'll try to get it to. Um, weeks in advance if I can, um, and then. The stretch energy code, uh, concern that was brought up by the counselors in the last meeting, um, I had. Chris, um, Mason, he's the new, uh, regional, um, director, I'm not exactly sure what his. Uh, position is, but he's new, uh, Mark Rebenski, uh, was promoted a while back and they just filled his position with Chris. Uh, I've been working with him a little bit, he did the analysis, uh, for the, that question. And sent that over to me, and I ordered that to Ralph and Matt, I'm not sure if we, I can't remember if I sent that to Jeannie to send to the rest of the council. Um, but I did ask Chris to join the meeting tonight, um, I did tell him seven P M, so he might not be in the. In the audience, but.
Is there?
Okay, so I will ask him to speak on that if anyone, um. Would like to hear his presentation on that, um, or if anyone had any further concerns on that.
Chris coming in. Wasn't sure if his picture was coming up or just a voice.
Um, oh yes, my video is not on, hang on. You guys are in person.
So Chris, um, I'm, I think you were joining, but I just, um, if you could just kind of go through the analysis briefly, uh, that you sent over to me. To share to the council.
Okay, um, sure, um. So I'm gonna do it briefly by memory, because I, I thought I had been told that it had been, the questions have been answered, but, um. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go just by memory here, I don't, I don't have the case study in hand. Um, what I, what I shared, because my, what I understood was that the concern was, um, with the stretch code changing. Um, and in January, the residential stretch code, um, was updated. And in July, the commercial stretch code will be updated. And I understood that there were questions on how that would impact the construction of a high school. And so what I, I went back to the folks who were heavily involved in putting the stretch code together, and I asked them, what? Kind of background do we have? And they pointed me to a commercial case study. Where they looked, um, very closely, uh, at the building. So this is, this is the bare bones building, this isn't, you know, if you have a. Uh, school, an extra gym or a pool or, um, you know, any kind of extra bells or whistles, this is really the basic. The shell, the mechanicals, the electricals, the plumbing, um. So looking at that, um. They looked at the new stretch code, and as I recall, they said it would increase the cost by less than one percent. Um, which is, you know, really kind of a rounding error when you take into account, um, the changes in costs that are gonna happen just by time going by. Um, and they said the, the, um. Net zero cost or the life cycle cost, I'm not quite sure how many years that was over. Uh, so it's basically looking at the financing and looking at. The, um, cost of utilities, uh, added together, how much is that gonna cost you? Um, you know, compared one building built to the old stretch code and a building built to the new stretch code. And the new stretch code would result in a, a lower utility bills over, uh, the life cycle cost of it, by, as I recall, around two percent. Again, not a lot, but, um, you know, so it's rather, rather a break even when it comes to the costs. Um, but they pointed out that the primary difference, and the thing that's really worth looking at, and you're kind of interested, is, is, I find it fascinating. Um, uh, and very encouraging myself, is that the, the big difference between the two stretch codes is that the old one. Was looking at taking the entire building and all the things that are operating in it, and trying to reduce the energy use in that. And that basically led towards. Increased efficiency of light bulbs, um, more a high efficient, uh, you know, if you can replace a boiler, you put a higher efficiency boiler in it. Better management control, all good stuff. Um, but what it doesn't do is it, it doesn't, but what it leaves you with. Is a building that you're constantly in a way kind of fighting, because the building shell itself is constantly losing energy. It's constantly pulling in more air than it needs to, uh, that you then have to condition for, uh, filter, um. Uh, uh, in order to use, whereas the new stretch code, what they've done is they, they, um. They shifted the focus to the building envelope. Um, so. And what you, you're making the building really good, uh, and I've heard architects have put it this way, is that. What you're doing is you're shifting your in, your investment. From something that's gonna last you maybe twenty years, such as a boiler. Uh, to something that's gonna last you hopefully, what, how long is your high school gonna last you, um, up to a hundred years, perhaps? Um, so you're sinking, you're, you're, you're putting your costs where they really are gonna last a long time. And you're. Giving yourself a building that is gonna allow you to use a smaller energy system. Um, smaller, well, the ventilation system is gonna be dependent on how much air you need to move through, um. In a way you could say, I mean, right now, people are going for ventilation, particularly in high schools. Uh, I, I should say in schools in general because of COVID, um, but. At the same time, building a building that's really tight means you need to put in mechanical ventilation. Which then gives you an opportunity to do what's called energy recovery ventilation, where you actually capture the heat of the air that's leaving the building. As you bring a new, and, and move it into the air that's coming into the building. Whereas, um. Without making a tight building, you're just gonna be bringing air in through the building shell. Uh, and you won't have a chance to actually capture the energy and, and hold on to it. So they, they kind of go together really nicely, um. And then, of course. Using heat pumps, it gives you the capability of putting, having air conditioning. Um, which again is something that's rising in most schools, it's getting to be, um, um. More and more common for schools to want air conditioning. See, did I miss anything? Well, I guess I could just say, you know, the way that they increased. The. Uh, or improve the, the building envelope. Isn't by adding massive amounts of insulation. Um, you know, it's not like building a whole. Um, styrofoam cooler around the outside of the building, um, uh, it's, um, you know, or, or beefing up your. Your rooftop, so it's huge amount of insulation, they basically added a bit of insulation all the way around, every place has gotten a little bit more insulation than the current stretch code has. But they very specifically went after what's called, um, thermal bridging. Um, so there's a lot of places in buildings today and buildings always, um, until the way we're starting to build them now. Where you wouldn't let the wall, but you might have a, you know, a window, um, base. That goes all the way through, uh, maybe, maybe it's a stone, a stone lintel or something that goes from the inside to the outside. And then your heat can just leave right through that piece, uh, and they're all throughout, throughout the whole building, it's like little even attachments that you have, um. Uh, it's, you know, a metal attachment that could be replaced with a plastic attachment. And that then breaks the thermal transfer of energy from inside to outside. So by addressing thermal bridging and then by air sealing, those two things. Have been prescribed by architects for a long time. Um, uh, but the builders don't actually have to do them because they're not in code and they kind of know that. Um, and then the last thing, and this actually is an important piece, I'm glad I'm not forgetting this. Uh, these requirements are not just how you build a building, but you have to test it. And it's not like you end, you finish, then you go back and test the building, did we do okay? As you build the building, you will take pieces of it and test it for air tightness, thermal bridging. Make sure you're building it right, and then you continue on, so the building will be under, under testing. Um, throughout the, um, the construction process, so at the end, you know you have a building that's gonna really perform very well. Uh, so that's. Probably never been in a building code before, that actually, more commercial building code, it actually isn't residential, is what Hurst Radiance is all about. You know, you have to actually test residential buildings to make sure that they are, we are gonna perform the way you think they're gonna perform. Um, so, the new stretch code is actually rather exciting on the kind of building that it will. Make sure you get, so, um, I think it's a really good argument to be, to be had that. Going with the new stretch code is you're gonna get a better high school. Um, and it's not gonna cost you. Much of anything more. Um, there you go, that's my presentation from where I can remember, I think I've got it all.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure, questions, happy to take questions.
So, anyone from the council have any questions? So.
That's great.
Chris, I'm gonna put a couple of numbers to your, uh, um, to your presentation, um. Yes, um, I did read the entire thing, I think it's Consiglia was the, uh. Um, company together, and, uh, it was point eight percent. Um, which, like you said, less than one percent, um, but point eight percent on a hundred and seventy five million dollar project is still one point three million. But with that being said, um, the savings that you're gonna have over life at a school is gonna way outweigh that. Um, I, it's an investment into your future and, um. I just don't think it would make sense not to do it that way.
Right, I'll also point out that the, the, the cost that you just said for the building. I suspect that cost includes something like, I don't know, you know, bells and whistles.
Everything, exactly.
Right, so the one percent is actually of just the building shell. And the mechanicals, so it's actually a, so one percent of a smaller. Piece of that.
It even brings it down further, which. Makes it even better.
Right.
I can have one other thing, um, as I sit on the school building committee, the committee has Bruce Knows and Tom. Uh, and Mary, um, we spent a fair amount of discussion about, um. Stretch code, do we wanna stay, go with it? Do you want to direct the architects to build it without the parameters in the new one to save money, but, um. The long and short is exactly what Mr. Mason has just said, and I want to read you an, a snippet from what the principal architect. Uh, provided the committee with back maybe about a month ago. And to off, let me see, it is also important to remember that the S B C, which is the school building. Committee has already priori prioritized targeting the M S B A green initiatives points. Which will provide two percent additional reimbursement for the exceeding base energy code standards by twenty percent. That twenty percent improvement roughly aligns with the stretch code's energy conservation requirement, so. It will be, actually, we may be on the. Positive side, not by a tremendous amount, but the, the, uh. The, the incentives that we're going to reap because of it puts, uh, it, doing so in a much favorable way.
Any other questions for Chris? I don't think so, Chris, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
On the face too.
Um if I can, I I would like Chris to just stick around for the F E V as well, just in case you have questions on that. He um should have. I mean, I might be able to answer them, but I uh if if I have trouble with any, he should be able to answer them, so. Um but with that, I just wanted to move on to the fuel efficient vehicle policy. Um there weren't any changes to the policy itself. Uh just an update to the vehicle inventory since the last meeting to um. Essentially just update any errors that were um and the one provided at the last meeting. Um and along with that, a note on the state requirements. Um the police cruisers will remain exempt for two more years. Um so instead of going to essentially, instead of them being required to uh abide by the policy. Um at the beginning of next fiscal year, so July of this year. It will um they will continue to be now uh exempt from this policy for two more years. That's all I have.
Is that just police cruisers or emergency response vehicles?
Uh Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is just police cruisers.
It is just police cruisers. Yep. And the reason why was, I mean, the reason they were exempt previously was only because. There weren't vehicles available. And so the reality of it is with today's, you know, um problems with um uh with procuring and um. Just getting materials in and uh and having cars available at all. The reality is we're back to that same situation, even though the cars are now quote unquote available. They're not quote unquote available. So the um so the so the, you know, the D O E R looked at that and said, okay, we're kind of back to the same place. Let's push this back. Um because we can't, we can't hold people to it. Um because you can't, if you can't get a vehicle, you can't get a vehicle. And we were fully expecting that to be. Um not the case in a couple of years.
Internet.
Good.
Well, okay, a couple of years buys a shelf life with the cars that we have because we all know they don't last forever, especially German. Yeah, the amount of time and multiple drivers, so this is good.
I I will say, though, um I have talked to many police commissioner, uh police chiefs who love the hybrids. And have gone way out of their way to get them. So it could be, you know, the either way you look at, if you can get them, you you could look at just whether or not you. Um you want to or not, they 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 they're really nice vehicles.
And Bailey, with the green communities, there's still up to twenty million dollars in grants that they've been uh funding. Um per year, correct? And that could be used towards fuel efficient vehicles uh if they're available or anything like that.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Any further discussion, any questions? And I would entertain a motion at this time.
I motion to approve the adoption of the fuel efficient vehicle policy for the town green communities designation as presented. Second.
Motion made in consecutive. Any further discussion? Here are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And when we are on to, thank you. Well, they're they're both staying for the next one, right? No, actually, I think Chris is all set.
Yeah, Chris, you're you're all set. I appreciate the help.
Very good. Congratulations on passing your the the vehicle policy. Thanks.
Take care.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
So the next is a site plan review by law amendment. Bailey, what do you have for us?
Yeah, so um this is something I've been working on for a couple of months. Um the. I guess the thing that initiated this uh mostly was the town's uh move to. A program called Open Gov for online permitting. Um and it is a program that I actually used in the in my previous job. Um and have some experience working with. Um I enjoy the program. I know a lot of um our department heads that are. Now shifting to it and enjoy it as well. Uh the biggest. Thing that uh is kind of holding up my department from being able to shift to. Um that or I guess using that system is the fact that everything um going through. My department goes to the planning board for approval, even non discretionary approvals. Um essentially, anything that I can read in the code that, you know, gives me a clear answer. Um these amendments would kind of be uh, I guess, enable me to be the um approver on those uh. In those situations, so um and then also it is uh. Giving the ability to um for developers to use a site plan review minor. Um rather than the full site plan review whenever there's um minor uh site. Changes, so um uh to give you an example. Um an ADA ramp being installed. Essentially, what the miner does is cut out the public hearing portion. Um which cuts down on the amount of processing time and um for for the actual review of that, so. None of the review steps are really skipped because of that. It's really just. The public hearing portion, and there are specific triggers that will trigger that um and conditions that need to be met for that. Um all within the bylaw that um that I gave to you um in full in the full language, so. Um a couple of other notes. Um waivers will now have clear triggers as well, so um where before. It was kind of up to the discretion of the planning director and or the building commissioner to. Direct an applicant to apply for a waiver to the planning board rather than a site plan review. Um and it really in our current bylaws, it's up to the planning board to. Grant a waiver, so um and it it will remain that way as well, but. Um the main change is just giving us clear triggers for um, you know, appropriate. Projects that we can say uh for certain would be uh granted a waiver rather than required a full site plan review. Um and with that also. Um going back to the non discretionary piece. Um it kind of rules out those lower um impact use changes that. Um would allow us to essentially uh grant business certificates and. That still has its own approval process, and I still review that, so. Um again, we're not really losing any approval steps or any review steps, everything. And honestly, I should say, since we um implemented Open Gov or began implementing it. Um we actually have a better review system and um I I think less things are going. Um or falling by the wayside or falling through the cracks, so. Um I think I had all the major points. Um my memos a little bit more detailed than that, but I'm hoping that I didn't miss anything that I kind of wanted to just give an overview of. Um but that is the idea behind all of the proposed amendments.
So the only thing I'm concerned about is in regards to the requirement in the charter under two six. Um and it's under town bylaws proposed proposed bylaws shall address one subject only. And after looking through yours, um I'm I'm not sure if it's one subject or not, but I think that's something that. As long as the planning board is aware of, you know, all the requirements in the charter and all and and what you guys decide to bring forwards, but.
Marilyn.
Um Ralph mentioned that to me, and I looked at your cover letter, Bailey, and you are, you actually have it divided into three sections. The use regulations with um table dash three, one special use regulations, off street parking. And then site plan review. My question to you, Ralph, is is it, could you do one section?
I think again, it it depends on what's involved, but. I think what we're looking at doing is taking your cover and sending that to the planning board. And it may come back as three separate uh bylaws. But it's saying that we feel as though this is important enough. To have the planning board. I mean, it's basically having like a citizen petition us. Is this important enough to go forwards? I think the answer is yes. I think we should send it to the planning board, have them look it over. Um obviously, Bailey's done a ton of work on it and receive a recommendation from the planning board back to us. Marilyn.
I also have a question and a comment. Bailey has, so the planning board has not seen this um project yet.
They, I did uh take it to them. Um I made a couple of changes since then, but I did take it to them at uh. Their one of their meetings in December of twenty twenty two, so they have seen. Um the majority of the changes and um. A version of the memo, so and I did send them this current version um last week, so.
So we can anticipate some discussion that we can observe um going forward before it comes back to us.
Yeah, they um they didn't really have much discussion when they, when I brought it to them before. It was uh just a discussion piece before, but. Um they mainly just seemed um, you know, in favor of it in general.
Right. Okay, and my other comment is um. Under business uses, you've you've got the indoor self storage. And under all of the various um zones. It's left blank except for the mixed use village. That was a use that we adopted within the mixed use village district. Plan and the the planning matter subcommittee, which is a um offset of the council, didn't feel that we could. Identify the other uses or the other zones where this should take place. So that's why it's all left blank. So that's something you probably have to talk about, too.
Yeah, yeah, and that was one thing. Thank you for bringing that up. Um that was one thing that um I did want to have, you know, clarified with this amendment. And we'll have um a couple of interested applicants and. Um a couple of different zones, so I just wanna make sure that that is clarified, that the use is defined within the code somewhere. Um and that it is clarified within all of the uh districts within the table, so that we can actually. Administer the the code because right now it's it's a. It could be inter interpreted two different ways. Um it says, see article eight, which. Um refers you to the special permit section. Uh there's nothing about indoor self storage in the special permit section, but. Um the applicants are arguing that, well, we could do this with a special permit because it says that. Um my interpretation is the opposite. I would say it's blank. Her our code is prohibitive, so if it's blank, it means it's prohibited. Um and that district, other than mixed use village where it is expressly permitted, so. Um so that is a brief, you know, synopsis synopsis of that, but it is something that I uh hope that is clarified in this round of amendments as well, so.
Thank you.
Period.
I I just wanted to add um that this program that Bailey's referring to, the Open Gov is the is the uh product that the town purchased through the MGM. Community integration grant, hundred thousand dollars. And so that the public's aware that this isn't, this is being funded and the implementation of this is being funded through that grant. And it has uh identified these subsequent drill down issues that Bailey's capitalized on trying to fix, so. Uh it's a good use of that grant money, and uh I think it's gonna, the purpose of that grant initially. Was to help the community recover from COVID closures, and so the online permitting aspect of this project is what. Was the original springboard, and that's led to these other uh developments that that Bailey's working on and. Jeannie's office is participating in, health department will benefit from it as well, so. Overall, it's a very good program, and this is just the next step uh in it.
Any other discussion? Questions? Then I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to refer the proposed site plan review by law amendments to the planning board for their recommendations of town council.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second. And any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Off to you guys, Bailey.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have anything that they would like to add at this time? Then is there a motion to adjourn?
There is. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
Everybody's so eager.
I don't think there'll be any discussion, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.